Should we jump right into a couple minutes of our training session?
Do we have a quorum?
Yeah, we have a quorum.
Yeah.
Yeah, three out of five, right?
Well, I don't think we need a quorum to do a training session.
No, we do not. But three out of five is a forum, so either way you're good to go.
It's unfortunate, Jordan likes the case law updates. So we did the case law update starting last month, so we'll just kind of, we're gonna pick it up where we left off. I'm just gonna run through these slides real quick. So we talked about statute of limitations last time. We talked about the five factor test, about how the courts really didn't care so much about the self-created element, as long as you're, you know, considering the other four elements required in the five factor test. We talked about a zoning board's review authority being connected to the zoning code and no other code, no other provision of the city code that's outside of the zoning code. We talked about, actually, no, I don't think we talked about this. This is where we left off. So today, we're gonna talk about standing. We're going to talk about Article 78 review standards. We're going to talk about rehearings. I think those are our topics for today. So I want to start off with this case involving the town of Southampton Zoning Board of Appeals. This came out in 2021. So just a little background. The group called DLV submitted plans to the town's planning board proposing a seasonal resort slash planned residential development with an accessory 18-hole golf course for private use by the subdivision's homeowners and their guests. The town planning board requested an interpretation of the zoning code, and eventually, the ZBA addressed the question as to whether, according to the applicable zoning code, the proposed golf course would be allowed as an accessory use. The ZBA interpreted the zoning code determining that a private golf course amenity would be a permissible accessory use under the applicable provisions of the code. The petitioners sought review of the ZBA's interpretation of the zoning code alleging that the ZBA's determination is irrational and contrary to the meaning of the village zoning code and is otherwise affected by errors of law. So that's just the background. The question is, can you establish standing simply because you live in close proximity to the project? So can the petitioners challenge the zoning board of appeals determination because they're neighbors? Now, this rule of standing states that petitioners have the burden of establishing both an injury in fact and that the asserted injury is within the zone of interest sought to be protected by the statute alleged to have been violated. In land use matters, petitioners must show that it would suffer a direct harm, injury, that is in some way different than the public at large. The rules of standing ensure that courts are adjudicating actual controversies for the parties that have a genuine stake in the litigation. This is to prevent random people from, you know, initiating litigation, filing lawsuits. So while it seems like everybody and their mother can sue, that's not the case. You do have to show standing, and that's the petitioner's responsibility, to demonstrate that they, in fact, have suffered an injury that's different than the public at large. So the zone of interest test, tying the injury in fact asserted to the governmental act challenged, circumscribes the universe of persons who may challenge administrative actions. So simply stated, a party must show that the injury in fact of which it complains falls within the zone of interest or concerns sought to be promoted or protected by the statutory provision under which the agency has acted. So while an allegation of close proximity might give rise to an inference of damage or injury, such that a nearby property owner may challenge a land use decision without proof of actual injury, the property owner is not just entitled to judicial review in every instance, but only when the property owner can establish that the interest asserted is different from the injuries suffered by the public community at large, and thus is within the zone of interest. So, for example, one of the petitioners was determined, was found that he lacked standing to sue. He said that he had a right to sue because he was involved in public service and that he was going to be impacted by this project and that it would impact his service to the community. He also lives 16 miles from the site of the project, which is a problem. So they said, "You're too far away. You can't sue. Like, we don't care how involved you are in the community, how connected you are to these other residents. You live 16 miles away. You don't actually suffer an actual injury." Another petitioner was located more than three-fourths of a mile from the outer boundary of the proposed project, and that these petitioners were located, like I said, so three-fourths of a mile located from the proposed residential site. They were located nearly a mile from another aspect of the project, which was a clubhouse, and there existed a permanently protected Forrester buffer zone that was over 700 feet thick, separating the nearest portion of the project from their residences. So they couldn't see the project at all, and there was never going to be an opportunity in the future for the project to encroach on their land or become visible because there was 700 feet of forested land. And the court said, "You don't have standing to sue. You don't have a valid injury. You have this protected buffer between your property and the site." So while they're a little closer, they're still not connected to the project in a way that demonstrated standing. So generally, the relevant distance that's going to be looked at is the distance between the petitioner's property and the actual structure or development itself, not from the property line. So while that buffer was part of the development as a whole, the actual construction of the golf course and the residences were farther away when you counted that you had this 700-foot of buffer. Aside from the lack of proximity to the proposed project, none of the petitioners showed that they had any actual injury in fact that was different in kind or degree from the alleged, from that alleged to be suffered by the general public, and that any injury that they tried to argue was too speculative. It couldn't be measured. It couldn't be proven. So you can't prove standing with, you know, a speculated injury, that this could happen in the future if all these other things happened. That's not gonna work in the court. Based on the submitted papers and that oral argument, the principal injury articulated in this case to support their standing was that the groundwater would be harmed by the development of the golf course on the project site. The court said that those allegations were generalized and that it was actually not shown that there'd be any impact on groundwater at the time of the development of the project. They also argued that there'd be a negative impact to community character, natural habitat, but they failed to demonstrate that the petitioners would suffer any actual environmental injury that was different in kind from the community at large. So I think I drove that point home enough, you know, we get a lot of sometimes general community opposition and general comments, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that person, while they're concerned about the project, can turn around and sue the city or the zoning board of appeals for a decision. They will have to demonstrate standing, and they might not have it.
Any questions about standing?
Well, I would just note, for what it's worth, there was a whole line of authority, or there was a decision from the U.S. Supreme Court that had been on the books for a couple decades that regarded, in effect, standing for regulatory taking grounded challenges. So we're someone saying, in substance, that the effect of regulations is to rise so high as to be a taking of property such that, under the Fifth Amendment, their owed compensation over the past 18 months, there were two decisions from the Supreme Court that effectively overturned both prongs of that. So in terms of raising minimally federal constitutional regulatory takings claims, potentially, that also opens up or relaxes standing requirements for other categories of federal law claims that concerned, that concern the impact of regulations, the big picture, the big, a really significant big picture issue is whether or not all options for variances or relief have to be sought before someone can say, "Okay, the result of this is to prevent me from using my property or prevent me from using it in a sufficiently economic manner." But, well...
Interesting. Yeah, you know, the standing for challenges to state plan approvals and zoning board of appeals approvals has definitely evolved over time. No matter how many times the courts come out with a rule, someone puts a new spin on it. So it's definitely an ever-changing area of law that it's always important to stay on top of. So next year, when we do a case law update, I'll probably have another case about standing that might, might either shed a little bit more light on the standard of zone of interest and injury different than the general public, or be a totally different decision in the opposite direction. You do, you just never know. So from our perspective, it's always important to be, stay very on top of what is the standing law for this field, you know, anytime you go to file a litigation or defend a litigation. So standard of review. Adjacent property owners brought an Article 78 proceeding challenging determination of municipal zoning board of appeals, which granted zoning application to convert an existing three-car garage into an indoor squash court and workout area. So pop quiz, what is the relevant standard of review in an Article 78? Is it A, the ZBA's determination was subject to substantial evidence review? Or was it B, the ZBA's determination was reviewed for error of law, abuse of discretion, or whether it was arbitrary and capricious? You can do sign language letters, A or B?
What was A?
A or B? About the extent of the alphabet that I know.
E or the other.
Make you all, Dave, A or B?
Well, I may have more knowledge of this than other people, but... So the answer is B. Arguably, it's A, too, because that would really tie into this arbitrary and capricious review, but...
Montos?
He's the lawyer.
I should've called on Dave last. So the actual language in CPLR 7803 states that questions raised, the only questions that may be raised in a proceeding under Article 78 are whether the body or officer failed to perform a duty enjoined upon it by law, whether the body or officer proceeded, is proceeding, or is about to proceed without or in excess of jurisdiction, or whether a determination was made in violation of lawful procedure, was affected by an error of law, or was arbitrary and capricious, or an abuse of discretion, including abuse of discretion as to the measure or mode of penalty or discipline imposed. Whether a determination made as a result of a hearing held and which evidence was taken pursuant to a direction by law on the entire record supported by substantial evidence, or a proceeding to review the final determination or order of the state review officer pursuant to subdivision three of Section 4404 of the education law shall be brought pursuant to Article four of this chapter and such subdivision, provided, however, that the provisions of this article shall not apply to any proceeding commenced on or after the effective date of this subdivision. When an Article 78 is brought against a zoning board of appeals, the standard of review in this category is three: whether the determination was made in violation of lawful procedure, was affected by error of law, or was arbitrary and capricious, or an abuse of discretion. So the case we have was against the zoning board of appeals of Incorporated Village of Bellport. In 2017, Eight Bayberry Road LLC submitted an application to the zoning board of appeals of the Village of Bellport, seeking several variances to convert an existing three-car garage into a squash court and workout area resulting in a new 23-foot-high building in the front yard, 10 feet from the side yard lot line and 5 feet from the front yard lot line. The neighbors challenged the ZBA decision via an Article 78 proceeding. So determination of municipal zoning board of appeals, which grant a zoning application to convert an existing three-car garage into the indoor squash court with a workout area, was not subject to the substantial evidence review, but rather, determination was to be reviewed for error of law, for abuse of discretion, or whether it was arbitrary and capricious, where determination was not made after a trial-type hearing held pursuant to direction of law at which evidence was taken. In an Article 78 proceeding to review the determination of a zoning board of appeals, a zoning board's interpretation is entitled to great deference. The record demonstrated that the ZBA engaged in the required balancing test and considered the relevant statutory facts. The ZBA had a rational basis for its determination that the requested area variances were not substantial and that the alleged difficulty was not self-created. The ZBA had a rational basis for its determination that the benefit to the applicant outweighed the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Again, the courts, when they're looking and reviewing these, these matters, constantly go back to whether the ZBA did their job. And the job of the ZBA is to balance the factors and focus on the five factors that are set forth statutorily, which we do every time. But it's just, it is so critical that you go through every question, you know, the five questions when you're dealing with area variances, the four questions we talk about when we're dealing with use variance, because that's what the court is going to look at when they review your determination. And it will be arbitrary and capricious if you're not focusing on those factors.
Any questions about standard of review?
Now, this is something we don't deal with very often, is a rehearing, but it is a thing. And it's set forth in General City Law, Section 81-A12, and the language states, "A motion for the zoning board of appeals to hold a rehearing to review any ordered decision or determination of the board not previously reheard," so you can only do it once, "may be made by any member of the board. A unanimous vote of all members of the board then present is required for such rehearing to occur. Such rehearing is subject to the same notice provisions as an original hearing. Upon such rehearing, the board may reverse, modify, or annul its original order, decision, or determination upon the unanimous vote of all members then present, provided the board finds that the rights vested in the persons acting in good faith and reliance upon the reorder, reheard order, decision, or determination will not be prejudiced thereby." So if the ZBA seeks to rehear a matter, hold another public hearing on it, you have the right to do that, but it has to be done by unanimous vote, and then your decision has to be a unanimous decision. So there was a case in 2021 with the town of Coonsis, Zoning Board of Appeals, that in a prior Article 78, the Monroe County Supreme Court remanded a matter to the zoning board of appeals to consider a new application and explicitly retain jurisdiction over the remanded determination. The ZBA conducted a new hearing on the new application and rendered a determination. Under Town Law 267A12, which states exactly the same thing as General City Law, a ZBA may vote to rehear its own decision on a specific application. The decision to conduct a rehearing and a decision after rehearing, both must be unanimous, just like General City Law. So my question is, is a court's remand to the ZBA, does that trigger the unanimous rehearing requirement? What do you think? So in this case, the court said, "You know what, ZBA? You didn't get it quite right. Rehear it. Hold another public hearing. Look at it again." Does the ZBA have to unanimously vote to do that?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I would be inclined to say no.
It seems kinda obvious, you know, that this is a different situation. The board does not have to vote to rehear it. It was, it's very interesting that it was argued, someone tried to take the stance that, "No, no, no, ZBA didn't do it right. They had to vote unanimously." So for the purposes of Section 267A12, which is the same for General City Law, a rehearing occurs only after a successful motion by any board member of the board to review any ordered decision or determination of the board. And it is undisputed that the challenged determination in this case was not rendered following a successful motion by the ZBA member to review any prior decision. It was ordered by the court. So thus, the ZBA permissively made the challenged determination by a split vote. Right? Because remember, if you, you have to vote unanimously to rehear it, and you have to vote unanimously for the decision. So they challenged it, saying that the ZBA's decision was invalid because it wasn't unanimous. The court's saying, "It didn't have to be unanimous. The Supreme Court ordered their review, therefore, they can vote normally." So contrary to, to the court's, the lower court's ruling, the fact that a different justice in a prior proceeding ordered the ZBA to revisit a related zoning application concerning the same property was irrelevant to whether the unanimous, the unanimous rule applied to the particular determination challenge in this proceeding. So plainly, the prior judicial order was not itself a successful motion by any ZBA, such that the ZBA was barred from reversing, modifying, or nulling its order without a unanimous vote. So in short, it operates only, the Section 267A, in the same section in General City Law, operates only when the ZBA elects on its own initiative to review or reconsider its own prior determination, not when it acts on a new or revised application, or when it revisits a prior ruling at the direction of a court. And I thought that was very interesting because it, the Supreme Court said, "Oh, they had to be unanimous," and it had to go up a level before someone came to their senses and said, "No, it does not." But while rehearings aren't something we deal with, I just thought it was a very interesting case to take something that seemed kinda obvious on its face, but it actually spent a lot of time in court. Now, I have, I have one more slide. Does the audience mind if one more? I'll be quick. Okay, this one's about substantial evidence. So in a case for the city of Long Beach, in August of 2016, the petitioner applied to the zoning board of appeals of the city of Long Beach for an area variance, which would permit her to build a multiple-family dwelling on a substandard lot located in Long Beach. After a public hearing, the ZBA issued a resolution denying the petitioner's application. In an Article 78, the courts look at whether a determination is supported by substantial evidence. What constitutes substantial evidence?
The five factors.
Yep, the five factors. What would go, what would be some things that you might look at?
Environmental impact, impact to the rest of the community, something out of character.
Okay, anybody else?
I've got, I've got a feeling the answer to this one is a pretty, is pretty open-ended. It's gonna depend quite a bit on what exactly is it, is it issue, but, I mean, there's, there's a whole field of things that could be considered. They could be going out and looking at what other properties are in the neighborhood adjacent to it. They could be, all sorts of things.
Yeah, you're both right. You're both right. It's really about the facts. That's what you wanna, you wanna look at, the hard facts. What's actually happening? What can you measure? What can you see? So local zoning boards have broad discretion in considering applications for variances, and judicial review is limited to determining whether the action taken by the board was illegal, arbitrary, or an abuse of discretion. Again, going back to that standard of review slide. In this context, courts consider substantial evidence only to determine whether the record contains sufficient evidence to support the rationality of the board's determination. A zoning board's determination should be sustained if it is not illegal, has a rational basis, and is not arbitrary and capricious. A determination is rational if it has some objective factual basis, as opposed to resting entirely on subjective considerations such as general community opposition. Here, the record demonstrates, or in that case, the record demonstrated that the ZBA engaged in the required balancing test and considered the relevant statutory factors. Contrary to the petitioner's contention, the denial of her application had a rational basis in the record. The proposed variances were substantial, and the evidence before the ZBA supported its findings that the proposed construction would produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, have an adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions, and otherwise result in a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. So, Montos, you were right on point. You're looking at the five factors, but you're looking at it with, what are the facts? And again, not that general community opposition. That won't go towards substantial evidence. Moreover, in that case, the petitioner's contention that the ZBA's determination was arbitrary and capricious because the ZBA had previously granted similar applications was without merit. To the extent that the allegedly similar applications identified by the petitioner actually involve similar facts, the ZBA provided a rational explanation for reaching a different result. And that went, again, towards their substantial evidence, what was supporting their determination. Just because someone has, you know, maybe a similar, or has been granted a similar variance does not obligate you to grant the same variance if you can determine that there are differences in the project that make a difference in your determination. So again, it's about building the record and supporting your determination with that substantial evidence, that factual basis. And that, my friends, is our 2021-22 case law update.
All right. I have, I tried to reach Jordan and haven't been able to, so I think we need to just open the meeting with the three of us. So before we do that, I don't know if the other board members had a chance to review the minutes from last meeting, but I don't know if anyone wants to propose any changes or to make a motion to adopt the meetings, or adopt the minutes, rather.
I have no proposed changes. I make a motion to adopt them as is.
All right. Motion, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries three zero. I don't believe we have anything to do aside from reopening the public hearing on... Sorry, I am just looking for the address here.
Eight sixty-six Walcott.
Sixty-six Walcott.
Eight sixty-six.
Eight six-six Walcott. Yes, all right. Thank you. First of all, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Heather Kahn for DBA, representing Mike Isabel of eight sixty-six Walcott. So based on comments from the last meeting, we revised our application. As part of that, we have relocated the building within the permitted setbacks. We've also reduced the square footage to eight hun, or 786, so we are below the permitted 960. The only variance that we're requesting at this time is really from the 40% permitted square footage. Based on the existing building size and the proposed size of the building, we would need, the max square footage comes in at 78%, but our total lot coverage is still well below permitted at 14%. percent, but our total lot coverage is still well below permitted at fourteen percent.
Do you have any renderings of what the building, oh, sorry. Do you have any renderings of the elevations, what the building will look like on the site?
We've, we've prepared this. Um, the building is not completely designed yet due to the fact that, that design will be based on whether or not the size and location is acceptable, but the intent is that it would be a one-car garage. Um, the garage door would face Rector Street where the driveway, um, is located now. Um, the rest of the footprint would make up the home office for Mike, um, and his photography business with some storage in the half-story above.
So you don't have floor plans at this point either?
Not at this point, no.
I will say, um, we received an email this afternoon from Genevieve Mathis saying, "Hello, we just looked at Mr. Isabel's revised plans. We, we would have liked to attend today's meeting, but are unable to do, due to personal circumstances. We trust that Mr. Isabel's structure will comply with requirements and have no problems. We will watch the meeting when we return from traveling."
Is that the family that presented last month?
That is correct.
Thank you. And what you're showing us on the diagram is compared to the, oh, what you're showing us on the diagram is the prior submission compared to the new submission on the height. Is that right? Am I seeing that correctly?
No, this, this shows the height and the sun angles because the neighbors' primary concern was the shadows cast onto their property. Um, you can see that by moving it the full fifteen feet away, the sun falls within Mike's-
You, you mitigated, you mitigated that concern, I see.
Correct.
Thank you.
And Montos, just to add, based on what was previously submitted, the variance for the rear yard setback was eliminated, and the maximum lot coverage variance was eliminated, and they reduced the overall size variance from nine hundred and sixty-eight square feet to seven hundred and eighty-six square feet.
Thank you. Got it. Thank you. I have no further questions.
I don't have any other questions.
I don't think I do either. I'm just trying to make sure I fully understand what's going on here. All right. So, sorry for that delay. But here's, here's the calculation I was just doing real quick, or wanting to make sure, because it's, I had done these calculations at the last meeting, and it's pretty much been since then, since I actually looked at the numbers. Um, but what this is indicating to me is that as a matter of right, the applicant would be able to build a house that was at least, had a footprint of at least one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five square feet, in, in which case, eight hun- eight hundred and thirty-eight square feet of accessory building, which is what's ultimately being proposed here, would be allowed as a matter of right, and everything would still be well within the twenty-five percent coverage limitation. Um, all right, you're, you're nodding, but does anyone disagree with that? Like, we put that in the minutes as a finding? Okay. So that's, sorry, that was a delay. I wanted to, to do an independent calculation on that. I don't, I don't have anything either.
Um, it's a public hearing, so before-
So we should ask if you-
Yes.
Is, is there anybody else here from the public who came to comment on this application, or?
I made a comment the last time. My name's Teresa Craft. Going back and forth viewing this legacy tree, I'm okay with the overall design plan and size of the proposed structure if the neighbors are. I applaud the good design build and the revised plans aligning the structure walls of the main house and the garage office. As far as the large spruce tree, it looks like it may stand for many more decades if left alone. I believe the applicant is showing good faith by moving the proposed driveway and building further from the property line away from the neighboring property. I support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And, uh, did you say your name? All right. That was Teresa Craft. All right.
You, you said it.
Yeah.
All right. So, do we, what do, does somebody, I mean, we've, we've got three board members here, which might make the applicant want to delay the vote on this matter, um, because with three of the five board members here, we have a quorum, but in all instances, you gotta have the three votes to get a variance. Um, why don't we close the public hearing, talk about application of the factors, and then we can let the applicant decide if they want us to, uh, vote on it or, or not tonight? How's, how's that?
Sure.
Fine.
All right. So does somebody want to, could somebody please make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing on eight sixty-six Walcott Avenue.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, let me find the resolution on this. All right. So as we are well aware, um, our overall standard here is to consider the benefit to the applicant if the variance, we are down to one here, right?
Yes. The only variance, the only variance at issue is for a three hundred and eighty-three square foot variance, where the maximum permitted square footage for an accessory structure on the property is four hundred and three pursuant to City Code, Section 22317E, and Attachment 223, uh, Attachment Three. In connection with the construction of a seven hundred and eighty-six square foot accessory structure, two-car garage on property located at eight sixty-six Walcott Avenue. Is it still two-car garage? One-car garage?
Okay. I don't know. I've got the resolution from the, from the last meeting, so-
That's okay. The only thing that's changed is now it's just the one variance that I just read for the one-car garage. It comes out to three hundred and eighty-three square feet. Four hundred and three is permitted. The structure overall is seven hundred and eighty-six square feet. The first factor to consider is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to a near, nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance.
By moving it away from the lot line, I think it doesn't create a problem for the neighbors, and it doesn't, isn't a detriment to the neighborhood or neighborhood property, neighboring properties.
Well, and bear in mind too, based on where it's now located, the, the location and proximity to the lot line isn't even-
An issue.
An issue. The, the only issue is the, the footprint of the building is larger than would be allowed based on application of the forty percent of the footprint of the current house thing, and, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I agree. I don't think that an undesirable change will be produced on the character of the neighborhood. Um, whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue.
I don't, I don't think so. I think this is quite fine.
I, I mean, I suppose they could put an addition on the house would be another way to do it. Um, but that might become more problematic than simply building the accessory unit.
Yeah. I mean, relatedly, uh, one thing they could do that would arguably be feasible would be to simply have two accessory buildings, um, because two accessory buildings that were each at that forty percent of the footpart, footprint standard would be more than the square footage. But at the same time, that sort of highlights the absurdity of it, because there's no, there's not even a minimum. If, 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 Mr. Buckley, please tell me if I'm wrong about this. I believe for accessory buildings, there's no limitation on the distance between buildings on a lot. Is that right?
Not from zoning, but, um, the building code regulates that.
Okay. So you could not put two accessory buildings just right next to each other?
I want to say it's about six feet in between principal and accessory, or accessory and accessory.
Okay.
State code, though, not, not zoning.
So the, but, so the bottom line is if you, if you took the proposed structure, split it in half, and separated the house by six feet, you could put it there, you'd have to deal with that other small shed that's on the property, but, um, so to the extent it can be achieved by an alternative that's feasible, the alternative, frankly, I don't think is actually that feasible. Maybe that's a better way of putting it. I mean, the result is somewhat absurd. Um, as to whether the requested variances, or requested variance is substantial?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe it is substantial.
I, I believe it's substantial, um, but I, the way it's designed now, I don't have an issue with it.
Let me put it this way, or see if, see if you would agree with this. Um, in, in terms of the quantity of variance that's being asked for from what would otherwise be allowed by the regulations, it's substantial. In the context of what they are doing, it's not really substantial.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
I agree with that. Otherwise, they wouldn't be here if it wasn't substantial, right?
Fair enough. As to whether the requested, or as to whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
No.
No.
I, I don't think, think so either. And finally, whether the alleged difficulty is self-created?
Yes.
So I have this voice in my head that says, "Everything is self-created," but he's not here tonight, but, "Self-created," for my opinion as well.
I also had that voice in my head, from, from Jordan.
At the same, at the same time, the, the fact that we're saying that something is self-created for the sole reason that any requested variance is self-created is also saying we don't really have any self-creation concerns.
Correct.
I'm not sure how that translates into a finding.
Got it.
All right. Um, do we think that the requested variances are the minimum necessary and adequate to protect and preserve the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community?
I don't think there would be any adverse effects or impact to the physical or environmental.
Well, it's, it's whether the variances are the minimum necessary and adequate in, in light of neighborhood character, health, safety, and welfare concerns, which perhaps is splitting hairs, but, um, perhaps a better way of putting it is, uh, do you realistically see an alternative of cutting down what it is they're asking for?
I mean, the fact of the matter is, you could always cut down, but I don't think it's substantial enough, for at least my own opinion, to worry about that.
Yeah. As you said, it could be cut down. It's possible. It's a little more difficult to determine without a floor plan to see how they've laid it out, to decide whether you could cut it down reasonably or not. Um, but within the property lines and the current outlines of the building, I don't have a problem. I don't see the size having a detrimental effect on the neighborhood.
No, I, I'm inclined to agree. I don't, I think for what they're proposing to do, I don't really see how this is an, is a practical matter, the minimum variance necessary. So, um, well, I said before, we, I would leave it to the applicant whether they want us to vote on this tonight or defer it until the next session. All right. So, um, and preliminarily, as we, as we always ask before voting on these, we normally attach, uh, two conditions to the issuance of any variance that's granted, one of which is a time, kind of time condition that requires obtaining a building permit within six months, commencing construction within six months after that, and completing construction within, let me make sure I'm actually citing these correctly. Um, within twenty-four months after the issuance of the building permit, if something happens where you need more time, we can extend. The other condition requires payment of all, uh, fees incurred by the city in connection with the application. Um, I just bring that up because if, for whatever reason, something's going on where it's going to take longer than that to get the building permit or to commence construction, we might as well modify that now. Um, is that an issue?
Oh, we're good with all those.
Nope. All right. So, does, does someone want to make a motion to grant or deny the requested variance?
Motion to grant the requested variance contingent upon all conditions the chairman just laid out.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Um, since it is actually a variance, I'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Chaccio?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Stavros?
Montos.
Montos.
Aye.
All right. I, I will vote aye as well. Um, so the, the motion carries, motion carries the variances gr- Um, so the, the motion carries, motion carries the variance is granted and we should be able to have that available for you to pick up by Friday and probably earlier.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right, the remaining matter we have is ongoing review.
You might not want to plug it, I think they're gonna do a little, um, update, so...
All right, so the remaining matter we have is the ongoing review of 1113 Walcott Avenue and, um, it looks like the applicant's prepared to make some additional, an additional presentation. So, do we need to have a motion to open anything or do we just open it?
No, you can just open it. It's just a miscellaneous item. It's not up for public hearing.
All right, so let's...
Let's do it.
Let's do it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, appreciate the presentation by the ZBA attorney. It's always good to get the case law updates too. Hope you all had a nice holiday, if you've celebrated over the weekend, so, uh, thanks for joining us. Um, again, for the record, my name is Taylor Palmer. I'm a partner with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, as the chairman mentioned, uh, we are here in connection with a secret review, a continued secret review associated with the application that we presented to you back in March. I actually had written my notes February. Somehow I just skipped right over March because we're moving towards the end of April, but here we are. Um, I am joined again by our architect, uh, uh, excuse me, I'm not joined by our architect, I'm joined by our traffic consultant, Rich D'Andrea of Colliers Engineering. See, I didn't say Mazer, so I'm, I'm somewhat here tonight. Um, I'm also here with Gavin Hecker, uh, the applicant. Uh, since we last appeared before you, we did submit supplemental submission to your board, uh, did incorporate, uh, responses to your comments. Uh, the zoning board attorney did send some additional comments that were provided, uh, to her from the board after the meeting, so we did try to incorporate as many of those into our submission, uh, as possible to try and help the board. Um, so we will, uh, in a minute, just go through some of the updates, but I did, uh, before turning it over to Gavin, just want to kind of give you some, um, highlights of those, uh, updates. And, uh, just one thing that Rich will touch on in a minute, um, we did incorporate or submit in our supplemental submission, the traffic study, uh, and we did incorporate the draft traffic management plan. So those documents are being utilized in this, uh, project to help, uh, manage traffic flows as distinct from existing conditions where you could have a wedding operation today and there's no control at all. Um, as site operations, we are proposing to have very strict mon, you know, monitor, or excuse me, management of the site for, uh, whether it's small or larger events. It's a full plan that accounts for really everything in the operations of the site, uh, which is really operating as a hotel and accessory events base. Um, and Rich, again, will touch on that, uh, just in just a minute. Um, one other important point, because we are talking secret issues, as distinct from more formal variance relief, of course, the nature of why we're here before you is the application as presently designed would require, uh, a parking variance for off-street parking. We've submitted that traffic report to you because it includes whether there are public parking areas or parking garages in vicinity of the project, which our traffic report shows there is availability for times that we would be utilizing them, which are generally in the evening hours, larger events being, you know, the later ends of the week, Friday, Saturday, uh, to say the least. Um, one other note, uh, that I'd also mentioned that wasn't in that plan because it can't be, uh, we did mention, I think briefly at your last meeting, is we have, uh, had discussions with a, a nearby property owner, um, who we have submitted a, a proposed license agreement with, which would provide us, uh, just over 40 parking spaces, uh, for events. So we have, we're trying to really mix into our, our, our bag a lot of options, not just, you know, municipal parking is the planning board, and Mr. Clark mentioned at the last meeting, we're not trying to take, we don't know what can happen with city property, can, you know, as we've seen around City Hall right here. Um, there's, there's changes, so we, we understand that, and we're trying to make more certainty, uh, that we'll have availability. So we're, while we, our report shows that we believe that the variance that we're, that we'll ultimately be seeking, um, we'd be managed or mitigated by a number of factors, the availability of off-street par, or on-street parking or parking facilities, the private parking that we are also seeking license agreements for, and then the 32, uh, parking spaces that we're providing on our site, um, we'll adequately address it because again, the, the parking trigger here is the large events that will be limited in scope and scale. They'll only be, they won't happen every night, but they are what drives our, our parking numbers. Um, so with that, uh, one of the other, uh, comments that the board brought up, um, was a, just sort of an understanding of sort of the economics and the, and the reasons, reasoning or, or the, the business model, um, behind this application. We thought that was important for Mr. Hecker to speak to, just because it'd help the board understand why these larger events on these limited occasions are, are, are necessary or helpful, uh, for us to ensure that this is an economically viable project, because it's a full, you know, restoration and management and, and maintenance of a historic church and also taking over a cemetery that has not, um, uh, seen a lot of love, uh, in, uh, in, in too many years. So there's a lot of, um, projects that are being taken on and of course, building out the new, uh, hotel in place of the parsonage. So we think we're, we're really trying to work with the confines of the historic district regulations and of course, the intense development that has been built really around this project, uh, and the site. So with that, um, I will turn it to Gavin and then we'll have Rich kind of, uh, walk us back on the alternatives to kind of help explain and justify, um, where we're coming from.
Thanks, Taylor. I'm Gavin Hecker. I'm one of the partners with Prophecy Theater LLC. And I just, I'm up here today to just, um, try to explain and answer a few questions that were brought up by the zoning board, um, at the last meeting. So I, I prepared a written statement here because I'm better at doing that, so I'm gonna read this to you. So with our business model in place, we are able to adaptively reuse, improve, and maintain two existing historic structures as well as rehabilitate an abandoned cemetery on a property encompassing 2.2 acres of land. The restoration of the cemetery alone is estimated to cost up to a million dollars. Any other business model would fall short of securing enough revenue to achieve these goals while maintaining the church as a space that enhances our community. The city of, of Beacon made the determination to designate this property historic but did not go so far as to account for a way to secure its survival while considering occupancy limitations due to on-site parking constraints. By allowing the adjacent residential developments to be built, the city again created significant hurdles for preservation. Currently, we are required to accommodate parking for 336 people as well as parking for the parsonage and cemetery. Any future religious congregation would look to maximize use of the property with maximum, maximum capacity events that typically occur on weekends and rely on off-street parking. It's very unlikely to find any existing church building that has a capacity which does not align proportionately to its size. Any reduction in capacity begins to undermine the ability to assure the financial security of such a large and historic building. We've been quoted at $300,000 just to replace the slate, the slate roof and another $100,000 for steeple repair. There is an endless list of significant costs associated with maintaining the property, and the only way to succeed at this is to use the building to its full potential. Without the opportunity to rely on our intended capacity, we would be forced to pursue a significantly more risky and disruptive business model that would not be feasible or a holistic approach to preservation. Without the ability to host a larger event suited for the space, the weekly flow of patrons and associated revenue would be both unreliable and inadequate. In order to secure its existence, a building that was established for religious or commercial use will always maintain an occupancy number that properly reflects its size. Throughout much of its history, this church has maintained rows, 19 rows of pews and a choir balcony. The pews alone can seat 336 people and another 50 people can be seated comfortably in the balcony. Aside from the main auditorium space, there is another 1,800 square feet of floor space and a separate room behind the sanctuary. This property requires a large amount of funding and support if we intend to preserve its historic and cultural integrity. Any viable business model needs to rely on maintaining either a steady flow of daily customers or an influx of customers at predetermined times, i.e., scheduled events. A business's success is dependent on the ability to accommodate a capacity in proportion to the size of its physical space within a geographic area that has a population base adequate for sustainability. The church, with 7,000 square feet of floor space and 50-foot high vaulted ceilings, was built with the intention to accommodate a large capacity. Conducting any business in a building of this size and location in Beacon is only financially viable if we can rely on the ability to host larger events on weekends when there is an increased opportunity for attendance. Currently, the daily flow of local customers necessary to support a building of this size and stature is not probable. Therefore, it is necessary to rely on a model that allows our capacity to maximize its potential on a limited basis so that it's sufficient for a sustainable future. It's safe to say that when we are able to secure a capacity that allows 350 people, we can operate in a way that justifies occupying such a large space and be successful with our and the city's goals to preserve the church, cemetery, and parsonage. So in, that's the, uh, basic, my basic answer to several of the questions that were posed.
Okay, well, let me ask you a couple other questions that came up for me, which are a, a couple steps back, but, um, and I apologize for not knowing, but just first and foremost, it, so, it currently has 336 pews?
It currently has an occupancy number of 336. Um, the pews, um, the estimated number of pews or, or seated people in the pews is about that same number comfortably.
Um, and, so I mean, what's the history been of, of, when was the last time this, this church was actually operating as a church?
When was it operating at a church, as a church?
Yeah.
It, it's a church now.
Oh, okay, I would, I, I was under the impression it was no longer...
No, it's still in use.
It's still, it's still in use. Do we know? Okay. That is interesting then. I, I, when I was looking over the parking studies and whatnot, I didn't really see anything that would, that looked to what was currently going on with parking and how substance that was working out.
Mr. Chairman, it's excellent segue. Uh, Rich, you, you read right into our presentation. Rich is actually gonna present a very brief alternatives analysis, which speaks to really that, because it, as part of the secret process, it will speak to the current use, the, what one would call in, in a, in a EIS or environmental impact statement review as a, a no-build alternative. So that's the current operation as the church and, you know, whether you constitute the parsonage as a single-family home or, you know, some extension of the church thereof, that's what the uses are of the no-build alternative. It's the current traffic layout, the current, you know, entrances into the site, all of that. So we have that. We also came up with another alternative, again, I don't want to steal all of, I'm very good at stealing my consultants' talking points, um, because they, they feed them all to me and then I just give you the summaries, but they'll, he'll, they'll, they'll present that to you, because I think it's important, you know, as, as the chairman mentioned, that currently today, a church today is, could have a wedding on the site without any of these traffic flow operations that we're proposing, any management plans, no other, you know, uh, devices to help control or manage, uh, vehicles entering onto Walcott. So it's, it's an existing condition. The proposal that we have is to try and mitigate that and manage that more effectively through all these other tools and then I'll let Rich plug in. But I don't want to stop. A few other questions before I have Rich speak to the alternatives analysis, which I think will be going to your point about the current conditions.
I, I had one or two related questions, but yeah, I would assume it goes into this presentation, but let me ask you one other thing, which, there's a good chance you're not gonna know standing there, but, um, it's definitely something that at least stood out to me. Where are we getting, ju, just in terms of setting what the use, the historical usage, the usage in March of 1964 was? What are we actually relying on for getting that calculation about, I, I think it was the same, wasn't it 330, wasn't it the same number from back then? I'm going by memory here, 336?
Yes. Right, so we used, so the, Beacon has two guidebooks that kind of collectively help you address the use is in 1963 and 65. There is no guidance manual. I think, you know, Tim Dexter probably has that squirreled away someday when he becomes the consultant for the city of Beacon, um, but the 1964, uh, book doesn't exist. So we rely on the 63 and 65, and I don't think there's any concern or question whether this property was a church. I think that was what it was known for, and so we, we use, utilize the, the calculation based on what that occupancy was at the church, and then we can exceed that through the 1964 exception. We, we can calculate backwards, we look back at the code from 1964 that tells you what the parking standards were for a particular use.
I just want to point out that 1964 is not applicable to this.
Just to, yeah, but just to clarify the, the building inspector's point, it's not applicable, it's applicable, it could be applicable to this property or a use that would satisfy it if we did not exceed the parking by more than what the 64 permission. So do you mind saying that for the record?
That's correct, but you did.
Okay, yes.
Right, no, yeah, I'm just, I'm, it's, for, for what's in front of us right now, it's nothing but contextual in terms of what's there.
So that's why we, right, so we require 100...
Trying to make it.
We were trying to make a justification to, to support that, the 1964 exception that is available if this application satisfied that, the permission that, that the 64 allowance allows, then we would, we wouldn't be before you for a variance. We would, we would be permitted to exceed, but right now, we only provide 32 parking spaces. We can provide up to 86, uh, parking spaces on, sorry. The use could provide, whatever the use is, so if it's a hotel, if it's a hotel and event space, we could have up to 86 parking spaces without variance, thanks to the 64 exception. But our use requires significantly more according to, at the maximum event. So those, those large 350-person events, that's what's triggering us being before you, and that would require 136. So the overall, what, what we need from you is the difference between 136 and the 32 that we provide. So that's the 104 variance, 104 space variance that would be necessary for the application, even though a use with 80, that would constitute 86 spaces would be permissive otherwise without variance from the board.
Well, right, just bear in mind, we're not voting on a variance right now.
Correct.
Yeah, all right, let me, let me ask it a somewhat different way. Um, Mr. Buckley, if they were, if, if an application was being submitted to the building department in conjunction with this property, setting aside obvious issues that would come up with special use permits, et cetera, um, if they were proposing an expansion of use such that under the current parking regulations, the parking requirement would be 89, which as I recall, is just under 25% over, I think it was 64, 63?
Mm-hmm.
The number from 1964, would you be satisfied that, that number I just said, I think it was 63, is the correct number to be measuring the 25% from, or would you want documentation of that or?
No, I, I don't know where these numbers are coming from. The hotel, the hotel is 31 off-street parking spaces, the conference center is 88, and the restaurant café is 17.
So just, I think that, yeah, I think...
And they have 32 spaces.
Yeah, I think there are two, yeah, there are two questions.
I, I don't know where all these, there's a lot of numbers being thrown around here, and I think, I think the point is being missed.
So yeah, I, so again, I'll, I'm gonna turn it back. I think the, we're confusing the issues. I understand what you're asking, you're asking about how do we reach a, what the 1964 exception number would be. That's not applicable. The building inspectors made it very clear, we exceed the number that would get us an allowance from, so that, that, that issue has been put to bed, I think also very eloquently by the ZBA attorney at the last meeting. So maybe if I just, I'll, I'll turn to Rich just for the alternatives analysis, just to speak to what the current conditions are versus what's proposed and what, because again, I, I think we're getting, we were trying to make justifications that we thought were applicable. We spoke with the planning board attorney about how the exception worked. We thought that if we provided another 18 or so spaces on the site, that we wouldn't even need a variance, period, because we thought that if we could have, we'll just call it 50 spaces, if we provided 32 on top of that, you know, if we provided the off-street parking spaces, we thought that that met the, the metric, but the, the attorney has advised us that that is not how the, the, the 64 exception is applied at all. It's if you meet the number, you meet the 25% increase, you're good. You go one space over, you need the relief for all the spaces. You don't need a relief for one space. So we, we thought by logic, you know, just the jump there, that it would only have been for a one-space variance in that instance. If we only needed one space based on the exception, the attorney told us that's not the case, you need the whole relief, that, that provision is only available if you completely satisfy the code requirement. We disagree, so we were just making a justification that the reality of it is, is your code permits a use to exceed the current parking requirements because of the existing non-conforming nature of it, meaning the use that was existence in 1964 preceded the zoning and therefore you have this ability, because otherwise you couldn't build anything on Main Street for the most part. I mean, none of the, the applications would be zoning compliant, they don't have parking. I was part of one of the first applications on Main Street, and it was, it just got approved last week, that actually provided the required, and it actually provided two spaces more than was required by the zoning. That was the first that I've been in, in my experience on Main Street. So these, this provision was, was prepared for, you know, applications to, to help support those existing non-conforming uses. We are, of course, in existing, um, I, I'm not sure I would call it non-conforming, it's a church, so it's hard to say where those can be zoned, um, but ultimately... But ultimately, maybe they're just gonna turn to Rich just to speak to those alternatives, and we're not, we're not taking advantage of the 64 exception, it was just used as an explanation to say why the variance isn't, in our minds, 104, it's less because of what the code provides, but Mr. Buckley's made it clear that, that doesn't work.
Well, so, I have a question before you go into your presentation.
Sure.
I don't know if you had any more questions.
Go for it.
So, I'm just seeking clarification. So, in your response, your correspondence dated March 29th, right, on the last page, the last paragraph, furthermore, it is important to note that notwithstanding the maximum capacity noted here, we understand that these occasional larger weekend programs are typically expected to have fewer people ranging from 125 to 200 people. So, if you're stating you're gonna go up to 200 people, why do you need a capacity of 350?
So, if, if I may, excellent question. So, the principal use on the site is, is a hotel.
Yeah.
So, this is an accessory use for the church space, so the church, the hotel is not being built in the church, the hotel is being replaced, and Rich, if you could just bring up the-
In the rectory.
The rectory, right.
Correct.
So, we, we, just the rendering, so we did also submit, one of the questions, I don't know if it was one of the members that's here this evening, was what the building would look like. So, we actually did submit to you the renderings to, of the hotel. So, the, the hotel is gonna be operational, you know, seven days a week, 365, that's, that's the principal use. The accessory use will only have specific events, and I will have Gavin kind of spell out more, more specifically, the conferences or the events that would take place at the, the, the church building, um, but they will not be, the, the max event is not a, on a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, it's limited number of events, and it's only specific days of the week, and it would only be so many times per year. So, we're, it's a, that, the maximum event, those large events would be 350, but the regular events that would take place at the event space are significantly reduced on number of persons. So, we wouldn't be triggering this higher threshold, but those large, as Mr. Hecker presented, those events help maintain the sustainability of the site. It's, it's, of course, the hotel is, is operating, but it's just like, I was gonna go too far there, I was gonna say a farm operation.
Do you have any specific numbers on how many of these large events you have to have to make this work, and what, exactly what days of the week, and if you can get them periodically, wouldn't it be in your best interest to have them more often? Why wouldn't you do that?
So, that, all excellent questions, and so, again, as far as numerically, and Mr. Hecker may speak to this, this isn't your, his first experience in this, in this arena, so I-
I can explain.
Yeah, I'll let him explain to that piece of it, and then I'll come to your question, it's just because the events are, they're not all the same, they're not the same variety, and again, we're also being, trying to be respectful of how many events that we would have, um, on the property, so we're trying to keep that, um, reduced as well, understanding that that's the nature of, of where we are, so-
But you wouldn't necessarily have to.
The planning board will likely incorporate at their, at their, in their review of the special permit, there are certain factors, and time, place, and manner are often how they'll restrict or, or manage properties, so, um, much of that will come through that, that planning process, but of course, the parking, you know, really drives a lot of that discussion. So, there's, there's a lot of, I guess, pieces like how that will sort of come out in the wash, um, but typically, that's done at the planning board where they'll restrict to hours of operation, um, you know, number of days of the week and things to that effect. So, Gavin, you wanna try and speak to the?
I, I could, and, sorry, this is, it, it goes, it goes to, um, there's, there's a certain amount of, of our business model that involves just being able to have a, a larger capacity event on, on a weekend, and that's, and that needs to be available to us in order to, to have an event that will help sustain, uh, the church and, and keep the whole business going in general. We're not, we wouldn't even be able to achieve those numbers on most days of the week. So, that's, that's why we're saying that most of the time, and, and we're, we're, we're open to this being written into our, our, uh, use permit as well, it's not, it's not, we don't, we're not trying to, to have these large events every night, this is just part of, part of what we need to do to accomplish our goals and maintaining the space. So, normally, we would be able to, to seat, uh, on a, on a normal level, it would probably be closer to 200 people, but we have the space to be able to expand that if we bring in something, an event that requires the, and it wouldn't be 350 people, it would, as an audience, it would be more like, uh, 320 people seated. Um, and that, that basically, I don't, I can't tell you exact numbers of how often this would happen, but it would, it would be restricted to, to weekends in general.
And if I may, there's certain applications that we've been involved in here in the city of Beacon that also have special permits, including, you know, recent approvals before the planning board, where it doesn't just go the time, place, and manner. For example, certain units, there was a, a central public green space, and there were limitations on how one could utilize that space, and, and even required our review, whether it was with the city administrator or with the building department, to authorize those. So, there's a lot of different mechanisms used to, to help, you know, if, if it's going to be an event over a certain size or, or other ways, there's a lot of tools in the, in the toolkit that, that are utilized. For, for us, we're, we're trying to work through all of the logistics, the site logistics, the traffic, the parking. We prepared a study that showed we will not have a, you know, a, a negative impact on both of those criteria based on the maximum events, the, the frequency of those, um, events, the typical utilization of the site. So, we've, we've analyzed it, you know, not just in, in theoretical, you know, terms, we've done it in a study that helps represent, you know, what it is that the, that we're, we're trying to, and how, what we're proposing will be really a better condition, which is what Rich is gonna get to in, in his presentation, and why it, it really, it's a, the function of what we're proposing can operate on the site at this size or, or otherwise.
Okay, well-
Am I hit Rich?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do that.
And we, we certainly are pleased to address more comments, I just wanna, I think this is helpful.
Yeah.
This will be helpful to explain the existing conditions versus what's proposed.
Ooh, trying to lose that. So, did I lose the screen? Sorry. No, it was, gonna, what's happening there? I don't know, can, I guess you can see that. Nope, there you can't. There we go. So, I think just to frame the discussion before I get into like the, the alternatives, just going back to what we presented, um, last month, and I think Taylor already kinda covered this, but these are the parking numbers that we require for the site, right? 31 spaces for the hotel, 17 spaces for the café, 88 spaces for the event space. The one thing that we, that we mentioned last week, and, and it goes to the operation of, of what is planned here, is that the total occupancy, the maximum occupancy of the entire site is planned to be 350 people. The, the hotel's gonna have a, a certain amount of people in it, um, and, and it's anticipated that a lot of them are gonna be attendees of the events, and then the café space would only be open during an event, would only be there to support the event, and would not have additional people from outside the event attending that, the café space. So, you, you have 50 seats in there, and we're not planning to actually have those 50 seats occupied, that café is there to support the event. So, ultimately, what we're, what we really require, while, while we're requesting a variance for 104, because that's what the code says we, we require, what we really require is an additional 87 spaces, right? Because we need, we have the 88 spaces for that event, and 350 people of, of occupancy, and we're providing 32, so we end up with 87 spaces. Uh, plus the, sorry, plus the 31 for the hotel, because those are always gonna be there. Um, so, that, that, we're, what I'm really looking at is, is 87 spaces for that event. When you look at what's there to-
I don't understand how you're doing that.
Okay.
You're eliminating the other part.
Right, because the café space, the 17 spaces for the café space, don't really apply when there's an event going on, because-
Isn't the café open to the general public?
It's not during an event.
Doesn't say that in the submittal, though. It says that the café is open basically seven days a week to the public.
If I may, it is in our app, we, so we call it a simultaneous, a simultaneous use, so it is accounted for in our submissions, we presented it to the planning board directly, so it's on the record throughout our, the scope of our application, so specifically, the café will not be open during an event. The, it will only be utilized to support, meaning it will not be open to the general public, it will only be open to the event operator that, that's utilizing it for that event. So, it will not be open on, separately from the event. Is that?
It's non-simultaneous.
Thank you for the phrase that I didn't remember, non-simultaneous use, thank you. So, again, that is part of our application, that is, so there are, these are all mechanisms that are utilized through these traffic studies to, to indicate what the realities of the parking requirements, or what, what the realities of the site operations are, and this is one of those where, yes, these are the uses that are, are proposed, so because you have these uses, they create a parking generation, but that use, because they're non-simultaneous, those spaces are not being used separately, meaning you don't need the additional spaces because they're non-simultaneous uses.
So, anytime there's an event, the café will be closed for any size event?
Well, I, I believe so, I mean-
I mean, if you have a wedding there, the café's gonna be closed?
Right. Well, café's gonna be supporting that, that wedding, so the people that are attending the wedding, I don't-
But, but I can't understand the logic there. What you're telling, what I'm hearing you say is, when an event is in process, you're concluding you need a delta of 87 spaces, but when an event is not in process, you need a delta of 104 spaces?
No, theoretically, we only need, when an event's not in process and there's nothing happening in the event space, we need 48 spaces.
That's just a-
The 31 and the 17 for the café.
Yeah, so, but, look, but part of the problem here is, and this isn't just academic, because I think this actually goes to the question that we're answering right now, is this, you're conflating two different sets of numbers. One set of numbers is what the calculation is under the zoning code for the number of parking spots that needs to be included on-site, and the second is the question of, okay, so, we're doing this thing tonight, a bunch of people are showing up, how many cars are gonna be that we need to accommodate? Um, so, yeah, even if the café is shut down during an event, that may reduce the number of, or the amount of demand for parking or the amount of traffic coming in, but what it doesn't address is this larger issue of, you're still gonna have a ton of cars coming in for the event, and, I mean, so, the question that's before us right now isn't what would we say in response to this variance? What, what conditions would or could we put on it, or at least not stated as such? It's simply, if this variance is granted, do we think this is a situation where there would be no significant adverse environmental impact?
Right, and, and that's kinda-
If the answer to that is no, we think there's the potential for a significant environmental impact, then going on and on about why the variances should ultimately be granted and how this is good for the community is great, but you're better off just having us say that and going back to the planning board.
Right, I'm not, and my, my point of, of trying to get to this 87 spaces is, is to give you what's, what do we actually need to accommodate when we're having these events in an off-site location, because we can't accommodate it on the site.
I mean, the calculation's the calculation. When the time comes and you come before us for a variance, what are you gonna come before us for? You're gonna come before us based on the calculation.
Right, so, the calculation is, is just, is a number, so oftentimes, you'll hear, as you said earlier this evening, you know, when we're looking at substantiality or looking at how large something is, and that's all, each application is gonna be looked at completely separately, totally different, you know, we're not a house, single-family home, you know, looking for a setback. What we're showing, and what we presented in our, our traffic report, is that there are, since we cannot provide those parking spaces on-site, that, for the, the, whether it's for just, you know, if it was just the hotel, or if it was, we can't provide them on our site. So, we've done a traffic report to show you that we can act, we have total, the ability to provide them at off-street, excuse me, off-site parking areas, whether they're public, or now we have the, the private agreement, we're working on a private agreement for other, you know, there's shuttle options, there's a number of other ways that we are mitigating the potential impact that we don't have it on our site. So, that's all we're, I think where Mr. Chairman was going, was that's what we're talking about, is that whether or not what we're proposing, which again, will ultimately lead to a variance of a specific number, not, you know, those are all justifications we're providing to you, but the reports that we have prepared were specifically designed to show that we will not have a significant environmental impact via traffic or parking, so that's making sure we don't impact any residential neighborhoods nearby, what we'll be doing to manage that, and that's what the traffic management, management plans for. It shows circulation for the site, it shows that we'll have, you know, flaggers, um, for, for events, you know, there's a lot of other mechanisms that we're incorporating so that as distinct from the current condition today, where a 330-person wedding could come in there, and there's no rhyme or reason or order, this is a ordered site, so we're trying to take an existing condition, which is a church, that could do this, you know, an event, obviously, a church isn't running a hotel, but they could run that event today, and, and we're, we're putting in all these mechanisms to help mitigate potential significant environmental impacts, which from a parking variance standpoint, are, are we gonna be impacting, you know, a residential neighborhood or other communities, and our plans are designed to mitigate that, to show where these parking areas is, maps to get you there, you know, other shuttle options, all these things to, to, to address those specific issues. Not, not as 104 large number, that's not the question we're asking you, we're asking, you know, is it, you know, we're essentially, what we're, we're working through with the board, the planning board at this time as the lead agency, and, and your board as a, as an involved agency based on the current count, is whether or not we, we're mitigating what would otherwise be considered a potential for a significant environmental impact, and that's what our study was designed for.
Okay.
Right, so, again, my reasoning for the 87 spaces is really, not to so much talk about the, the variance, but more talk about the environment, the environmental impacts of the parking and the traffic generated by the, the project. And to do that in the context of comparing it to an alternative, okay? So, right now, you have this church that can accommodate 336 people as-is, there's not enough parking on that site right now to accommodate that number of people. So, when you look at that, 336, it's 84 parking spaces. That site right now can, it's not, there's no striping, there, there's no designated spaces, but if, if I took a look at it, which I, I did today, I, I think I could get maybe 45 spaces on there. So, you're looking at a need for another 40 or so spaces somewhere else to accommodate a church, that church today as it is, right? So, that would be in the Tompkins lot, in the municipal lot here on Beakman Street, however, wherever those spaces parked would be. Um, you know, we're, we're looking at providing the, the 46 spaces, or whatever the number is, 40 spaces down as a, as a, as a license agreement at a different location, you know, when you look at that compared to what the no-build is today, we're, we're fairly similar to what, my, my point is, we're, we're fairly similar to what is happening today as far as the number of spaces that we actually need, right? The, the other point is, is the traffic portion of this, right? And we, we did a traffic impact study, we looked at intersections up and down 9W from South, South Avenue, not 9D, from South Avenue up to Ver Plank, and we showed that there isn't any significant impact from this project as it's proposed today. The generation for a church at 336 space, uh, people would be very similar. I haven't done that calculation, but my anticipation, it would be very similar. Now, are they gonna have events at similar times? We, we can talk about that, but in reality, I, I don't think that, I, I think that the, the traffic impacts related to a 336-person church as it stands today versus what we're proposing for this site with the, these occasional larger events are very similar as far as traffic impacts go. So, I, I think that, that was kinda just the point as far as the environmental impacts of the traffic and the parking that I, I was trying to get to.
Okay.
Just like to point out that for clarification, that the church has an extremely small congregation, and does nowhere near 300-plus.
Did that church-
That was, that was one thing I actually, I mean, so, again, as things stand right now, what is attendance looking like and how many vehicles are typically parked there on a, on a Sunday? Or if, if there is a wedding there on a, on a, on an, on an event day, funeral, whatever?
I believe the, the current congregation that's, uh, using the church right now gets about 100 people there on Sunday mornings. I mean, I, I don't have exact numbers on that. However, you know, there is something to be said for the fact that the church that owned the property before did not have the, the proper amount of fundings to main, to maintain the church because their congregation was not big enough. So, that's, you know, that's part of the problem here. It, it takes a lot to, to maintain this building, and the, the congregation that's currently there and the congregation that was there before are not able to maintain the building without a significant amount of, of help and funds.
Dave, I just, was that parcel that the church is- Dave, I just, was that parcel that the church is on, was it always that size? At some point, did they sell off part of their property north? Yeah, no, south, where the townhouses are now? Was part of that ever part of the church property?
I don't know. I don't believe so, but I'm not entirely sure.
Because I thought I remembered parking on that side at times on Sundays, on that side of the church.
I think, to Mr. Chaucho's point, it's a very important point, because there's significant development pressures that were created by the new multifamily development that really surrounds the property in that area. Of course, this is a historic district, so they were allowed to be built in that context, knowing that this, you know, important historic building was located there. But that's, I think, whether they were parking permissively in those other areas is distinct from the question that you're asking. But, but yes, they were parkers, I believe, that had, you know, because we've heard this at the planning board level too, that had parked at other locations. Because again, there was available off-site parking in proximity to the site. And the same is true for our application. It's, there are structured parking, and we're very proximate, of course, also, to the train station. But we do also, you know, we're trying to put together, we do have a license agreement that we're putting together with another nearby neighbor. That would be forty-six spaces. Gavin clarified that, it was forty-six spaces that would also be available.
What, so, how many, how many parking spots are at the church right now? Or is it, it wasn't really clear if this was the...
There's no defined parking as it stands right now. If you laid out parking on that site in a fashion that would fit the city code, I estimate that today that you could get about forty-five spaces. And still maintain circulation.
I don't know if you, Mr. Buckley, have a basis for saying whether that's a roughly accurate estimate or not, but, I mean...
I couldn't say, and I don't know why it hasn't been supplied and laid out and shown.
So if you say forty-five is your estimate, why are you saying you provide thirty-two now?
Well, the thirty-two is with the hotel space, that we're expanding the hotel into that.
So you're taking away from some of that estimated forty-five.
Correct. Exactly.
Thank you for helping me understand.
Yeah, so if you...
Sorry.
Go ahead, I'll just say this, because you can correct me if I'm wrong. But if you look through some of the comments, um... Who from... All right, I gotta look back at my notes. But if you look at some of, if you look at some of the, there was some, one of the, one of our consultants, the city's consultants, one of the things they had raised was issues related to signs that would be put up. And in substance, the basic plan is, all event parking is off-site. And then on top of that, at least some of the anticipated hotel and cafe parking is gonna be off-site too. But that's what the, that's what the basic gist of it is. So the idea is, in effect, whenever there's a, there's an event going on, all of the parking that's associated with that event, except to the extent people have checked in at the hotel for the parking lot filled up, is gonna be off-site.
Right. And that's what we prepared our traffic and parking management plan, was to show that that is available for that off-street parking, as similar to Main Street uses and others that rely on area parking. I think the mayor used to say, it was, America Sally used to say, like, he used to be able to roll a bowling ball down Main Street, and that was the parking problem. It still isn't a parking problem today, it's just, it may not be, you may not be able to pull, you know, right up to a specific, if you're trying to get a donut glazed over, you might not be able to park right in front. You might have to go a half a block past. But if you turn left or right, you know, you're typically finding it within that next street. You know, it's just, people wanna park directly in front of the uses. So here, we prepared this plan to address those specific parking needs. And I'm not sure what the, so the, there's some other factors, just by the way, about why we can't provide certain spaces. For example, we did propose a loop drive that used to be in front of, there's an existing driveway right now to the south of the church. To bake the property, you know, to really present it from Walcott, we've been asked to remove the loop drive, which we have. And we're moving actually the old driveway, because again, it really gives the church its own space. Nothing in front of it is, I think, going to Mr. Jensen's point. They don't want any signage, they don't want anything affecting it that way permanently. Permanent placements to, you know, where people could park, or et cetera, or might abuse the rules, even if it's enforced by an applicant. So we've done a lot here that is creating the circulation, the adjustments and the focus. And again, it all ties to viability and function of the site. So building out the hotel, it's not just the parsonage building. We did have the rendering is included in your submission of what the building, you know, is proposed to look like, but that all relates to the site. But whether it's thirty-two, or forty-five, or eleven, we, the plan that we have is showing how we can manage those event parkings at other locations.
All right, so you're gonna walk us through that plan?
Yeah, I absolutely can. I mean, we talked about it last month, but I can walk you through it again.
But I think last month, we talked about, how are you gonna secure, as opposed to relying on municipal shared, right?
No, we said both. So, last month, we knew that we were looking at getting this license agreement for the parking spaces, for the forty-six spaces. But we said at the same time that all additional for the, parking for the events would have to be off-site, and we've identified the locations that are nearby, as well as more remote. We talked about, and actually, I presented...
So thirty-two spaces on-site, plus forty-six, you're in the process of contracting.
Correct.
That's seventy-eight out of the needed one-oh-four. The remaining one-oh-four, you're gonna look at shared lots.
It's not one-oh-four, but... Right. So, if we wanna look at the, the one-oh-four is the variance that we were talking about.
Yep.
The variance number. So, take forty-six out of that, and we're at forty-eight, right? Man, that's bad math. Sixty-eight.
So you're gonna rely on sixty-eight shareable spots? Or future other license agreements?
Right. Right. And then, then we talked about the seventeen spaces that during events for the cafe, we theoretically wouldn't actually need. So that technically comes out of that number as well, but we know that the variance...
That I don't agree with, but I hear you.
Yeah. So...
And the like, the spaces you're looking to rent, essentially, there's no guarantee how long that agreement will last.
I can't.
That's, I mean, again, the, we are signing a license agreement, so, sure, there's always, the same as the city's parking lots, or any other lot in general. There is, so it's not running with the land. So, it's certainly that way, but that is the consistent policy. Leases and/or license agreements are the typical parking arrangements for any of these, specific arrangements where, for example, on Main Street, you're just, you don't have parking. And you can't. This is how it works.
But these are more for rental agreements.
There, it's a license agreement. So it's a full, there's insurance provisions, there's, you know, there's terms of...
But you don't, you don't have them in perpetuity. There's a time set on that.
There would only be revocability if there was a reason, I mean, if there was, they could be revoked. There are license agreements, they could be revoked. But the idea here is to, we, let me take one step back. So the report that we prepared doesn't require this private agreement. We're doing this to supplement what we already have as available parking. So this is, it's not, certainly not gravy on the potatoes, or whatever we're gonna call it. But it's, it's just adding yet another bit to help ensure that if there was a concern presented that maybe a city's, you know, parking area may not be available. Because the converse is also true. The city right now is working on a significant parking plan for downtown. So, we're not taking credit for the fact that the city's also working to develop additional parking. So, you know, sort of poking at the application as far as, you're absolutely right, it's, there is a revocability component to it. But we're just adding yet another tool to say, we can't take credit for the city's future potential parking areas. We are, you know, what we are proposing can be managed by what is available in the area. We have a study that shows that. And I don't, and I don't think the city's consultant has refuted that particular characterization. We're working on our management plan, how these things function, how we get people out there, how we do our, you know, if they're shuttling, if there's other components, we're working on that. But there is parking available, that's what our report shows. And again, that's what we're working towards. So this private agreement is just adding on, and we are still pursuing other private agreements, because it just gives even easier assurances, or further assurances, that we do have adequate available.
It's possible that, I missed this in your response, but I asked a number of questions. One around the business case, I think we, you talked briefly to that. We've talked quite a bit about parking right now. But I really wanna focus, oh, at least I wanna tee this up, and you tell me when you wanna talk about this, but around community impact. I'm just gonna read to you what I wrote. Two bullets. How does the proposal not deter business from existing businesses from Main Street? Is one bullet. I'd love to hear your feedback on that.
Okay.
And the second one is, given the proximity to residential neighborhoods, how would this proposal mitigate imposing a negative burden on the neighborhoods and the residents, such that, but not limited to, noise, trespassing, encroachment on personal property and/or space, late-night operations that might have a negative impact on the neighborhood's quality of life?
Okay.
So two topics. When you feel appropriate, I'd love to hear your thoughts on those.
Understood. I think Rich was just, I guess, finishing up on, unless there's anything you wanna touch there.
Yeah, and we were talking about the traffic and parking management plan.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with, so, just, maybe Rich will just finish that thought, because we did talk about the numbers. So we're dialing down to the actual, what, where we have availability. Our study shows that it's available in the area for these events. Generally speaking, we provide enough off-street parking just for the hotel use alone. But that wouldn't be enough for the hotel and the restaurant component. But again, we've shown how we can provide it, whether it's in public off-street parking areas and the like. So the other part of the management plan is also important, and it's managing how these events function. And that's, that's really the key from the traffic and parking.
Right. So, we had, I had presented this figure at last month's meeting, which is basically, what we're showing is how we're gonna manage the on-site circulation, right? And, and that's part of the operation of the site. But a bigger part of the traffic management parking plan, or parking, traffic and parking management plan, is, is how do we get information out to attendees on where do we want, where we want them to park? How, the best way to get to the site? And making sure that we're doing our best effort to limit the number of people that are actually entering the site when there's no parking there, getting them to the places that we know that there's available parking, right? So, obviously, we're gonna, we're gonna spread information through a website. We can spread information when we sell tickets to these people for a ticketed event. If it's, if it's not a ticketed event, if it's a wedding, or some other kind of conference, or something like that, it can be done through the event coordinators. And then, on the days of the event, that's where the circulation plan comes in. We can provide handouts to people who are coming in to drop off, they are not sure where to park, say, okay, follow these directions to get to the off-site parking location. The other thing, some other things that the, the city's traffic consultant has recommended that we're gonna ultimately incorporate into this plan, because it was draft, in a draft form we submitted, was some additional signage, signage at, like, the River Ridge driveway, and at West End Lofts driveway to say, no event parking here. And maybe if the city's open to it, we could say, up at Tompkins Lot, say, park here for event, if that's available at that time. So things like that, we can, we're gonna take a look at.
Let me ask you, that's a lot of notifications, but how, who enforces that? I mean, in the end, how is that enforced? I buy a ticket, you tell me to park here, I don't wanna park here. I'm gonna park across the street on Beakman Street.
I, 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 look, I can't, I can't stop somebody from parking on Beakman, Beakman Street. But, in my experience, when people are provided with knowledge of readily available parking spaces that are not familiar with an area, right? They will take that information and use it. And I don't think that the Tompkins Lot, or the municipal lot, is, is an excessive walk, excessive distance to walk. We're talking about, you know, a couple of city blocks, at most.
I also live on Beakman Street, so I would be okay with somebody parking there.
I'm sure you would.
I just wanted to say, that's the street I live on.
I, I'm just, I, that's my experience, is that when, when information is available...
You know, I get it, I mean, but you're just presenting all this as, that it's all under control. And in reality, you know, what happens on an event night, and nobody's abiding by any of these instructions, that's what I'm asking.
The point of what we're putting together here is to show that there, there's not gonna be, there is no, no-impact scenario, including the current condition. There's no no-impact scenario. We're mitigating a potentially significant environmental impact. We're showing how we're managing these impacts. So it's not that there wouldn't be any impact, that, we're not turning this into a park. You know, there are other ways that we're helping mitigate, and that's what Rich was touching on. You know, we have had initial communications with adjoining property owners. They've also submitted correspondence prior to public hearings. We're not even in a public hearing yet with your board or with the planning board. So we haven't had all of that. But we've individually been reaching out, because we know where we are, we understand the context, and we're creating these plans to address those specific issues. For example, we also have connectivity down to Beakman. So we are proposing a path through the site. Similar uses are on similar adjoining properties. I think West End Lofts has theirs, and I think River Ridge also has theirs. So collectively, we're doing, you know, similar, creating a new connectivity between Beakman and Walcott. You know, all these things are being factored into that. And the same is true of managing to ensure that no one is parking in the adjoining, you know, residential neighborhoods. That's all being considered as part of it. Mr. Buckley makes an important point. There's always gonna be the folks that don't do it, you know, and that's, those are, those are there. But those limited instances of it, or because you have local knowledge and you might do it, the same as, the converse may also be true. They may, because they know it isn't somewhere they wanna go park, they may already live four blocks away, and they're gonna say, I'm walking today, you know, or I'm gonna get dropped off. And we've created a plan where those circulation works, so you can get dropped off, so you're not parking there, you're not parking, you know. The idea here is, come on the train, come from downtown, get a, get a ride. You know, these are all ways that, all of that factors into what the actuality is of the parking. So when Rich is presenting these numbers, and when I get Dave mad about the numbers that I try and use, it's all because we're justifying what is the reality. That's why we're presenting these sort of alternatives to you, is because the reality of today, what's on that site today, may not be fully utilized to its capacity. But if, you know, the church happens to get a great following, it doesn't mean that it couldn't be. And it wouldn't be treated or managed the same way that our application is being designed to do, to mitigate what could otherwise be an impact that is in no-build condition. And of course, that's us preserving a church, managing it that way, you know, making it better, bettering the conditions respectfully, because of, you know, we're taking out that driveway, and also improving an old graveyard as well. But you had other questions, so I'm gonna let Gavin speak more to the community, other community character aspects that I haven't touched on.
I was gonna also add that it's crucial for us, in order to mitigate these issues, to get this information to people that patronize, that are patrons of the facility. And that's, that's important to us, that we, that we do this. It's important to the community, it's important to everybody, it's important to have this order. So, there's never gonna be a situation where we can control a hundred percent of the people all the time. So we have to, you know, we say, like, if somebody parks on Beakman Street, it's gonna happen. As I said, I live there. I, like, most of the people that I know that live around me are not gonna be up in arms if someone happens to park on their street. Having said that, we're going to try our very best to mitigate these issues. So...
The, one other thing about the traffic and parking management plan, and this is something that we've done, where we've used these in other locations, is, as part of the approvals for the project, it can be written into those approvals, or maybe part of the special use permit, that in six months, a year after, after the first operation of the facility, that this traffic management parking, parking and management plan gets looked at again, to make sure that there's nothing that needs to be updated to, or changed, to modify the controls that are in place, to make sure that everything that we're doing here is the best we can do to mitigate whatever potential impacts there are. So that's something that I think we can, we can agree to do as part of the approvals, if we get to that point.
Well, that, I mean, just to be fair, that only goes so far. I mean, once... Once the, once the structure is in use as, as an event space, the cities, there's only gonna be so much ability the city has.
Yeah, but when I say, yeah, when this has been done in the past, right? We've used this in other locations. It's in consultation with the city and the city's consultants on what's happening as far as the management of the, of the site during these events, and the off-site, and making sure that there's, there's, if there's something that needs to be added to the plan, that we, that we add that to the plan at that time.
And if I may, this is also a special permit. So the board has, just as your board does in conditioning approvals, if they're rationally related, there's essentially, you know, there's a nexus between the condition, they can do so appropriately, so that the approval can be conditioned on, on things that are appropriate to mitigate the concerns that you're presenting. That can be hours of operation, that can be means to addressing, you know, the larger, the large events, rather than, you know, the other events that aren't... rather than, you know, the, the, the other events that aren't perceived to have those types of impacts. So there are ways the conditions can, can help channel those as well.
Okay, the, I, I realize it's getting late. I had a couple of specific questions I wanted to ask. I'm guessing we're going to wind up adjourning this to the next meeting. But the, the specific questions I had, first and foremost, how is it anticipated that usage of the church as a renovated special event space is gonna, is going to compare with its current usage? Meaning, I, I would assume it sounds like attendance is expected to go up a fair amount. Are, are we expected to have, are, are people who got, to what extent do you expect volume in the church? Sorry, 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 volume in the renovated event space that's now functioning as a church to line up with what's currently going on in the church?
Uh, well, what, what's currently going on in the church is very minimal. The, the current congregation started renting the church due to COVID, so they could be able to spread out. So there, there, we continue to, to, we continue their lease with the intent of increasing the number significantly to what the church can actually handle. But, so, yeah, it will, it will increase the numbers as to what it is today significantly.
If I go back to the numbers that you hypothesized earlier, you said roughly 100 today. You're looking at about a 3X plus fold based on your capacity. So I think the answer to the chairman's question is 3X plus.
Right, and, and the exact, the exact reason why the current church rented the space is because it is larger than what they need. So they were able to spread out due to COVID. So that, that seems to kind of fit what is supposed to be there.
Would we expect, okay, so would we expect more or less people to, as a proportion of attendees, to travel to the location by vehicle, by car? After these changes, or is it kind of, we don't really have any basis for knowing? And so in other words, let's say that right now, 10% of, 10% of people, for whatever reason, are walking to church and the remaining 90% are driving. Do we, the, the first thing is, have we looked into what the current usage is in connection with parking demand? And the second is, how would that line up with what we're, what's, what's being proposed? The reason I'm asking this is because definitely one of the comments that came out from, in particular from John Clark, was that all of the numbers that are being used in both the traffic and parking calculations, not all of the numbers, but significant numbers that are being used in that are ba, are assumptions and who knows how many people on average are actually going to come here together in the same car.
Sure, and I'll, I'll address that just in particular, because John Clark is not your traffic consultant. So John is speaking from a planning perspective. So I, the traffic numbers are generated by, you know, the manuals and the specifics and the uses. We have to consider that not just what is presently occupying that church. Because that's not, you know, if Taylor Palmer buys that church and I'm running the Church of Taylor Palmer, maybe I have a great, you know, following and that, that, that's, the occupancy is the occupancy and that's driving the counts. The same problem we have is that we're not running a 350-person event every day. We're not. We're a hotel that has occasional events. So it's not, to your, to your point, what is currently today, 2022, still, you know, the re-rise of the pandemic or the re-rise of COVID, you know, whatever, wherever we are is not, that's not necessarily the, the, the discussion that we're supposed to have. We can, those are factors you, you can consider. But that's just one of, the, the site can be occupied for more than it presently can or presently is. And so we're, what we're evaluating is what the manuals speak to and your traffic consultant has reviewed that in that context. So I understand totally what you're, you're indicating. You're, you're interested about how many, what's going on today and how, what we're proposing will be different from that. I don't, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but.
No, that, I'm interested in that one. And the second thing I'm also interested in is.
How people are getting there.
The parking and traffic surveys that have been done. And I'm not criticizing them for doing this. I mean, pretty much any study that's based on doing something like this always result or relies on assumptions incorporated in here and there, because otherwise you wouldn't be able to make sense out of data. But there are several big picture or big components of the ultimate calculations that are going into that, that are based on assumptions that, um, I'm not really sure we have a basis for them, meaning bottom line, we don't actually know exactly how much traffic is actually gonna be coming out for events at this.
You're talking about, there, there's two different things, right? Traffic and then there's parking, right? The numbers for traffic versus parking don't necessarily always line up. Now, they do more so for events, so that, that's number one. But, um, I think some of what you're, you're discussing here is coming from John Clark's comments where we took into consideration assumptions for 10% of people are gonna either take the train or they're gonna walk from their homes or they're gonna take a bike, right?
20% are gonna get dropped off or that.
No, I think the, I, I think ultimately in the, in the traffic study that we, our final traffic study that was submitted, 10% was the number that we assumed for drop-offs, walking, biking, transit usage. It was, that was the total, 10%, nothing more. Then we took another, we made another assumption that 50% of the people that are in the hotel, staying in the hotel, were, are also gonna attend the, the event, right? So that theoretically reduces your traffic generation and reduces your overall parking demand for the, for the facility. So th, those were the assumptions that we took in, in both the traffic analysis and the, and the parking. Now, your other point is comparing it to what is happening, and, and I'm sorry. You, do I know for 100% that there's gonna be 50% of the people in, in the church, in the hotel, attending the event? I don't, right? But based on what we anticipate the overall operation of the site to be, we feel that it's a reasonable assumption. The, the 10% credit that we took, there is some basis in that based on census data for people just knowing what's happening as far as walking and transit usage in, in, in this area. And that's kind of where the 10% came from. And that was actually something that we went back and forth with the city's traffic consultant on. So those numbers, I feel fairly comfortable with. Is there fluctuation there? Sure. I think your other point was to the, uh, the existing usage. I don't have any solid numbers on what's actually happening, happening there today. It's not something that we considered. It's not something that we would typically consider because it's just, it, it's not super relevant to the analysis that we're doing. I mean, theoretically, if I were to take credit for something, for parking or, well, parking wouldn't matter, but for traffic anyway, it's really only gonna reduce my, my new impact. If you, if you get what I'm saying. Like there's a, there's a traffic generation associated with what's happening there today. And then there's a traffic generation associated with, with what the, uh, the proposal is. And there's a new generation total that would have a, an additional impact. So it, but the point is that the, on a traffic end of things, I don't think it's really relevant. And from a parking, from the parking end of things, based on what I do know of what's happening there today, I think the parking is probably accommodated on the site because they have, you're not using that facility to its greatest extent practicable, the great maximum capacity. So there's not really off-site parking that's happening there today.
I wanna make, just, I wanna just make one point, just because Rich made it to me and it was like one of those lightbulb moments too. But for the purpose of Seager, and I know the chairman mentioned we're getting late and we do appreciate all of your time, you know, getting into this, details with us. But the project as proposed presently, with, with again, the limited events, the maximum large events, again, not every day, you know, specific large events. Our reports do show that there would not be a significant environmental impact because of the availability of parking and not creating a traffic impact. That's, those are, those are figures that are in the reports. If we were to, for say, reduce the maximum event total, if, just from 300 to 350, 350 to 300 for some reason, all we're doing is further reducing what already, as far as a traffic and parking analysis works. So we're, we're just reducing further what already from our report functions at the site. So I did want to make that point because it did stand out to me, because again, we were looking at the alternatives analysis. We, based on our studies, and I'll, I'll let Rich.
But would you agree that statement mitigates risk to further success? And leads to further success if you reduce the capacity from 350 to 300?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. It's, yeah, it would negatively impact the ability to sustain. Yeah, that's exactly right. I just wanted to make clear that, that if there was a concern that the amount of, that, that parking, because again, we're here to talk about potential impacts. So we've talked about how we're mitigate, trying to mitigate, you know, any potential impacts to adjoining properties, because it's, again, limited number of events. It's, you know, we're, we're talking about how we're doing the hours of operation, you know, that we have the availability in public lots and we're, we're creating private agreements, all the things that we're, we're trying to put in, into this puzzle.
And I'm not really sure if you answered our question about alternate business cases. What would it mean to reduce down to 300? From a business case standpoint? You don't have to answer that right now, but those were questions that were posed that I don't think were thoroughly answered.
I could, I, I could just speak a little bit to that. The, the more that you reduce the, the maximum number, the results in the more, in us having to have smaller amounts of people more often for longer hours on a more regular basis. So given the opportunity to have that 350 every once in a while, we aren't, we don't have to operate with as much disturbance to the neighborhood with having people around all the time. And, you know, say we had 200 people, um, five days a week. We don't have to do that if we can have the 350 people on the occasions that we need to and want to.
But, but does the business case work? And does it mitigate, does it make your request that'll eventually come to us less significant?
I mean, that's subjective to, to, I mean, it depends on.
Well, that's the ask.
Right, but the numbers, so again, I'll, I'll speak to that, right, I'll speak to that very specifically because we, and it, you, you deal with it all the time when you're dealing with your five factors and analyzing the area variance, which, of which this is, it's not a use variance, it's purely an area variance. Numerically, that's not the, the standard. To say that it's of significance is, is not the numerical standard. It's whether it would have a significant, you know, the, the five balancing factors. That's one of the factors is, is sort of the substantiality of the variance. So we've reduced already, the app, the original proposal was over 400. So when working with the planning board, we've reduced it down to 350 because that was viewed as being real, to what Mr. Hecker was saying, that's where we're not needing to have as many events. And also, it's, it's a, it's a balancing act to try and mitigate what we're here to discuss, which is the potential significant environmental impacts and the viability of the, the operations. So it would reduce, so the substantiality is not just viewed as a numerical standard, it's.
From a financial hardship, it is.
Fin, I'm sorry?
From a financial hardship on evaluating the case, it sure is, it becomes relevant. If you can make the business case work at 200.
Okay.
Right, I mean, we shouldn't justify a variance for the sake of a business case, right? So if your business case, if you could, if you could show us why 200 or 300 doesn't work and you minimize what you're coming to us for, wouldn't that make it better?
So again, I, I think Mr. Hecker was trying to present that the, the alternative, which we just did identify. So if you reduce the max events from 350 to 300, the, the, to ma, to ma, to keep, continue managing the site and, and being able to maintain a historic church, to do all the things necessary to, to operate this property. You have a cemetery on site, you have other things that are being managed here. It's not just, we're building a church and an event space. We're building a hotel, you know, from scratch. There's a lot of history being preserved and maintained and managed. So there's other mitigating factors that I would say respectfully do weigh into that balancing act, you know, balancing test that your board would be faced with. Sure, the, the economic viability is certainly a consideration. But the same way the board couldn't ask whether Mr. Hecker has the economic, whether he's got the bank account to do the proposal, the board can't ask that question, but can certainly consider when, in, in discussions, that, that function. But what Mr. Hecker is saying is, if you reduce the number of, so the overall parking number is driven by that max event. That's, that's what's driving that. But if we reduce that max event just to address the parking, it may have other consequences that are not, they're not consequences, but they're changes. They're, the frequency of events would need to increase to manage the, uh, the reduction in the, the larger scale events. I don't know what I'm doing with Rich's thing here, but I think my pen.
My computer.
Oh, okay. So let's, go ahead.
Real, real quick, the, just for informational purposes, 350, 88 spaces. 300 is 75 spaces. So you're talking about the difference of 13 parking spaces? I, in my, my opinion, with what I know and we've shown in the study what's available, I don't think that's a significant.
It's about a 14% difference.
Yeah, uh, sure, but is, is there available, is there available parking to accommodate it? I, I would say there is.
For you guys to show us.
Well, I think we have in the study that there is sufficient parking in the area to accommodate the 88 spaces that we, we say we need. And then we're providing, we're, we're working on providing this license agreement.
Right, that's the issue with the substantiality and percentages and numbers. That's not, that isn't respectfully how, and the case law speaks to this too, how the evaluation of the factor, and your attorney can certainly speak to this, that's not the test. It's not five versus eight. Sure, if, if it's reduced from that, you've reduced the number. You're looking at the, you know, it goes to a different test. It's looking at the minimum, um, you're giving, you're granting the minimum relief necessary to, to, for the, the overall application. So it's, that's why it's a balancing test, right? There's all these other factors. So yeah, 14%, 10 spaces, the numbers are, are there. But it's looking at what that's doing from a, does it have an impact on community character? Does it have an environmental impact? Those are all the factors. So, so the number is, you're absolutely right. It is a reduction from a purely numerical, but not impact. We're, we're suggesting that that numerical change doesn't have a, a, an impact, a community, you know, betterment or change that would otherwise, you know, outweigh what we're proposing. I.e., this is the minimum, you know, alternative necessary so as to not create other impacts that may not be parking-related but may otherwise be associated with the, with the, with the development.
Okay, so it's a, it's a quarter after nine. Other issues aside, can you pull your computer off? Because otherwise, I'm not gonna be able to make this big enough. What, what I wanted to do, all other issues aside, was go over, um.
Yeah.
Pull this up here.
Oh, it's not going off.
I think it's just frozen.
Yeah, I think it's just frozen.
It'll, give it a second, it'll.
Yeah.
We could take that.
All right, um, Drew and I had started working on the template of a memorandum to produce in a response to this, because, you know, one of the things, one of the things we were discussing is, you know, most commonly, we're here dealing with variances and we have these statutory factors and issue or deny the variance, issue a resolution, whatever. This is somewhat different because we've been asked to provide input. So with the caveat that, let me fix that. This is just a, this is a working paper.
Yes.
This is what we were putting together as the framework for actually addressing what's in front of us. So the, the planning board is serving as the lead agency in a secret review of a proposed development at 1113 Walcott Avenue. And it's requested the zoning board to provide input regarding and comments relative to parking. Specifically, the applicant proposes to provide 31 onsite parking spaces.
32.
32, okay, let me. Where 136 parking spaces are required pursuant to the city zoning code. Thus, the applicant's proposal would require a variance from the zoning board in order to proceed. And I will just note, emphasize this says, would require a variance from the zoning board in order to proceed. As in, nobody has sought a request for a variance at this, at this point in time. We understand that the proposed development is a type one secret action. Accordingly, the planning board cannot approve the proposed development until it renders a determination of significance.
If I may, I believe it's unlisted. It's just coordinated, it's, they're doing a coordinated review, but I believe it's unlisted.
I'm gonna fact check the, the whole thing.
Yeah, understood. I just want to be clear, it's not, I don't believe it's a type one action.
Okay, well.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Well, the truth is, that regulation would apply whether it was type one or unlisted.
Exactly right.
All right, we'll, we'll double check that, but, all right. If the planning board finds that the proposed project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, then it will issue a negative secret determination. However, if the planning board finds that the proposed project may include the potential for at least one significant adverse environmental impact, then it must issue a positive determination, which would then require the applicant to prepare an environmental impact statement that addresses impacts, alternatives, and mitigates. that addresses impacts, alternatives, and mitigation. Okay? The zoning board, us, we are not the lead agency, we are an involved agency because, according to the plans that have been submitted, these would ultimately require us to make a discretionary decision that would be needed to approve this proposed action. So even though there's no, there's no application pending in front of us, by statute, we are in, we are involved in this manner because what they're proposing to do would require our sign-off. All right? That means that we have the responsibility to provide the lead agency with information it may have, we may have, that may assist the lead agency in making its determination of significance, as well as other information later on. Secret regulations provide twelve illustrative and non-exhaustive criteria to assess the significance of environmental impacts. I'm not going to read these.
I was about to cut you off.
What I may do is have Drew send out a copy of this regulation so that everyone has them, but-
To be honest, I think that we should circulate a copy of this.
Or just circulate a copy of this.
To the rest of the board.
Here in the open meeting, I don't think there's, right? All right, then, in our draft-
It's just the part two.
The next section of this summarizes what's been submitted for our determination, starting by date with the planning board's memo, asking for our input, all the way down through the most recent letter from council with attachments. We summarize what's going on here. This is a two and a quarter acre lot developed in R one forty in the historic district and landmark overlay zone. The former Dutch Reformed Church, which is no longer in use, we need to change that, and an associated rectory are located on the property. The applicant proposes to expand the rectory into a thirty-eight room hotel and to renovate the church building as a conference center and event space. The zoning code requires properties to include onsite parking spaces, but provides an exception for structures and land use since existence on April twentieth nineteen sixty-
I would recommend we take that all out, since the nineteen sixty-four does not apply, it should not be referenced in this memo. But we can go on, this is just a preliminary draft, I just know it's in here currently, and I do think it should be taken out, but that's-
Okay, well, let me-
To be deter, to be discussed further.
Let me keep going. The exception becomes unavailable if there is an increase in intensity of use that results in a cumulative total increase of required parking spaces of at least twenty-five percent. The applicant has stated that three hundred and thirty-six spaces, which would correspond to sixty-nine parking spaces, the building inspector has concluded in that March one letter, that a hundred and thirty-six spaces would be required, which, assuming that number is even remotely accurate, is definitely more than twenty-five percent, meaning they have to get, they have to provide-
A hundred percent.
The requisite number of parking spaces or get a variance. So, after reviewing the information submitted and the criteria, which basically is, how does this, how well does this line up with those twelve factors? The ultimate question we're being asked to issue here is, do we think that this could or would not have any significant adverse environmental impact? And, so, I apologize for just taking up over five minutes going through that, but that was, we're having a discussion that goes to a lot of whether this project is a good idea, whether the variance should be granted, how much of an impact there would be, and the reality is, this may be kind of going a lot beyond what we need to do-
Sure.
-to decide this. I don't know, I don't know if that's helpful for other board members in terms of thinking about what's going on here, but the biggest thing is just this, like, assuming the project moves forward, whether they need to get an environmental impact statement done or not, there's almost certainly going to be various revisions that happen along the way, and unless it changes to a significant degree, at some point, it's going to be coming in front of us and they're going to be saying, we want a variance from parking requirements. But that's not what's going on right now. It's just a question of, based on what's been submitted, can we, in substance, say, we don't think there would be any significant adverse environmental impacts that would follow granting the variance they're asking for? We can say, we think there's, we can say, we think there could be significant negative environmental impacts, and we recognize that steps taken to mitigate those impacts could help to alleviate things, and if this is the way we feel, we do overall support repurposing this project and having it as event space, but, I mean, it-
Well, we can only make the decision based on what information we have now. We can't assume things that haven't been done or agreed to yet. We can only base it on the information we've been presented with so far.
Yeah, and, I mean, one thing I would say, just throwing it out there, I mean, one thing that I think is pretty much undisputed is, assuming the projections about, okay, so how many parking spaces are we actually going to need if we do a three hundred and fifty person event, which, among other things, is going to depend on what the event is? We can provide the parking space within a two thousand foot radius. Okay, if you're proposing, if what this is going to involve is people having to park up to two thousand feet away in conjunction with any large event, I'm kind of inclined to think that says that there could be a significant negative environmental impact, and I wonder how much of a point there is in-
Right, and just, we would just seek justification for that, that point. Like, thinking that two thousand feet is a lot, is, you're in a city, it's intended to be walkable, it's designed to be so, and we have proximity based on analysis that shows that we don't, that the, there's no parking impact associated with the project. So we've submitted a report to that effect. So, sorry Drew, go ahead.
No, no, Taylor, I was just going to say the same thing. You know, as the board considers, what the planning board is asking you to do is assist it in its determination of significance, which is whether there will be any significant, whether there may be any significant environmental impact, specifically with respect to this parking issue. So that's what this board's focusing on. As you're making your comments back to the planning board, you can render your interpretation, but you definitely need to support your interpretation. Why are you making a certain statement? You can also set forth questions that you think the planning board should continue to ask the applicant, and you should all, you can also suggest, you know, things that might support your determination. For example, you know, they keep saying they have this, they're looking into having this license agreement, it's not finalized yet. One of the things you might say is, you know, if they finalize, the planning board should make sure that they have a final license agreement. We feel that forty-six parking spaces that would be approved, as they talked about at the meeting, would help mitigate potential impacts. Something along those lines. Or other license agreements, because I know there were a couple maps about other locations that they could do parking in. So, that's something that we can reference in our memo back to the planning board.
So, are you asking for our opinion now, or are you just giving us food for thought?
No, I'm food for thought, food for thought. Because I think, we can circulate the, this is a preliminary draft, I'll work with Dave to clean it up a little bit more before we send it out, and then I'll kind of give these exact same instructions in an email. Think about it, because I think it'll be helpful next week to come with your thoughts.
Next week?
I'm sorry.
We said, we said that too, though.
Just surprise.
We said last week, so that was our fault.
I'm sorry, you threw me off. Next month, with some more direct thoughts and comments that you'd want to put in this memo, so we can start preparing it to get it back to the planning board to keep moving this process forward. Also, if you have any additional questions that, you know, have come up in your head as you're, as you're going to bed at night or this whole week, again, send them back to me in an email and I will forward them to Taylor to pass on to the applicant.
I stated the one earlier about the community impact that I still want to hear a rebuttal to, right?
Sure, I'll put that back in, I'll put that in an email to Taylor.
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, I do, I don't think anyone's ready to add the comments that we just spoke about tonight. If you are and you want me to type them down, just to get them penned to paper, we could do-
Mine are around both environmental and community. My concern on the parking is the high dependency on shared parking. I get the forty-six, I look at the percentage numbers, but there's still a high degree of parking spots that are required, that are shared. I'm concerned about impact that might have to existing businesses that also thrive on the weekends.
All of that, and I'm also concerned about what happens in the future. The city sells a lot, the city builds something else and wants to use that lot.
And it's how those, I'm sorry, Dave, I just don't want Monto's comment to slip away, it's how those existing businesses rely on the same parking spots that this business-
How existing businesses rely on, to Dave's point, what will tomorrow bring for those shared spots, they're not guaranteed. The number of shared spots to me is pretty substantial, if I look at it from a percentage perspective, are pretty substantial. I think that has my concern around both environmental as well as community impact. And then my comments around how do we protect the residential neighbors from a quality of life impact, right? A noise impact, an encroachment, et cetera, et cetera. Encroachment, excuse me. So those are my areas of concern.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, so I guess, what he said, what I sort of added on to that, which is uncertainty in the future, and then, what I've kind of been trying to get at right now is, I don't, I mean, I don't think anyone's doing anything in bad faith, but projections about how much traffic this is going to generate, what proportion of those people are going to be drop-offs, how many are going to park, for how long, how many people who were standing in the hotel are going to go to a public, or go to, go to an event that's scheduled there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, these are all projections, and there may not really even be anything more accurate to look to, but what that also indicates is that there's a fair amount of uncertainty about what the actual impact of this is ultimately going to be.
Right.
You made a comment earlier about, I think, walking two hundred feet or two thousand feet is a number. Forgot what that number was, but, I'm going to speculate, my wife would not be happy walking that many feet in her high heels to a wedding.
I could tell you my mother-in-law is moving right now, and she said, I want to move to a downtown, because I want to be able to walk to dinner. I said, sure as shit, you're driving your car from your house. There's not a question in my mind that my mother-in-law is not doing it. My father, I sure you will, but, my mother-in-law, sorry, you know, just in case you're watching at home. But yes, we appreciate that comment.
I mean, there's also, one of the, one of the comments that got raised was that, in order to comply with ADA, you know, to say handicap parking requirements, there might actually need to be a lot fewer than the thirty-one or the thirty-two parking spots onsite, because you may need to be able to meet the handicap requirement for the full three fifty in maximum occupancy. But that would-
It's good to know now, because that could trigger the change of the numbers. Yep. Well, it's, right, right, understood.
I mean, yeah, I mean, long story short, like, I, I'm just speaking for myself personally, like, yeah, I think it's a good idea to get this building repurposed and do something with it. I'm having a little trouble seeing how we can conclude that there simply would not be a possibility of a significant adverse environmental impact, and if that's what we need to conclude, it may be more efficient just to conclude that and send you back to the planning board.
Right, and if I may, it's not just whether it's, that is the determination of a POSDEC. When you review a part two of an EAF, you'd be looking at if there's small to no impact or, so there is ways to kind of piecemeal that out, and we might be able to, and through that submission, I don't know, Drew, if you want to, if you think it's appropriate to provide the board with the part two EAF, I'm not suggesting that we go through that factor, that review, but at least from the traffic impact, because it kind of helps peel, peel the onion back a little bit, about what are considered, you know-
I think, I think, I don't necessarily think we have to fill it out at this time, but I think having a part two EAF in front of you to look at, just to see what the questions are, could be very helpful. And then you, each of you individually can see how you feel about each question, and maybe that, that can be part of the discussion. We don't have to go one by one, some are clearly not applicable, but I'm going to-
We're not talking about, you know, noise, or, like, the odors or other things that might be in there.
Right.
Endangered species, right.
I'm going to circulate, and I'll do a long form part two, because I think that provides the, the most information, and I'll point out maybe which ones you should focus on to help you think through your thoughts on this project and what other comments we want to include. I'll also take what we've talked about tonight and clean it up into a memo, and I'll circulate that as well. Just, this will be a draft, this is not going anywhere, but this might help you formulate your thoughts a little bit more and get something finalized.
Right, and ideally, the applicant is just hoping that, that those comments from the board are certainly appreciated, and we'll try to, I think, work to address those in our, our next submission, and we appreciate that the board has helped, wants us to continue to move forward with the planning board. So again, we appreciate all your time tonight. We're really hoping that, that by showing or your comments, that it may not rise to the level of a significant environmental, that it may be an impact, we're not suggesting it isn't, but that there may be some suggestions to help mitigate, you know, that, those impacts. And that's what I think would be particularly helpful to the planning board. I'm speaking from the applicant's perspective. We've proposed our mitigation plans, we've proposed our off-site plans, we're trying to get, you know, other solutions, but that would be very particularly helpful in this application, to understand what could help mitigate, you know, or if there are things that you think that we're doing that do help mitigate that, not just that there's, you know, a significant impact, because we're, we are working through it, trying to make that happen.
Okay, well, so this is a miscellaneous matter, we never firmly opened a meeting.
Right, so now-
I'm sorry. So, I mean, we're discussing a miscellaneous matter, we didn't open any formal meeting, we just adjourned?
Yep.
Well, we never closed the initial public meeting, right? Did we?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we did.
No, you closed-
The hearing on the prior application.
Public hearing for the other application, you-
But never closed the public, just the-
Right, it would be, you know, a motion to close the meeting, if we're all ready to go home.
Is there anything else we need to discuss right now, or?
I don't think so, I think, Mr. Palmer said everything he needs to say.
Motion to close.
Stop it. I was like, that's a risky statement.
All right, aye.
Aye. I don't get the vote, but thank you. Thank you very much.
Aye.